Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. As your representative, I will testify with all my nations, our God, the invisible, the liberating, just as we stand before us today.
Before we begin, I would like to mention that School Committee member Chris Shannon is participating remotely, so please, that is a voice coming from the TV up there. The first item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comments? No, all right. No one has signed up for public comments, so I would like to move on to the Superintendent Update. Dr. Baieda?
Madam Chair, members of the committees, and all of my colleagues and families that are here tonight, welcome. Just a few updates. The Use of Facilities Subcommittee had its first meeting yesterday and began the work of looking at the future of our elementary schools with attention to the South, the Wilken, and the Jones. We meet again on the 11th, and I've sent updated materials as of today to that working committee. The Finance Committee meets on the 6th of March, that's next week, at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall. I am announcing this evening a virtual employee meeting for Monday, March 4th, at 3:45 PM. That'll be virtual for any employees. The invitation will go out this week. Friday, the 1st of March, there's a Legislative Breakfast at 8:30 AM, of which I'll be participating in with local legislators and superintendents and a number of other folks that have been invited, as you know. And then lastly, the Student Opportunity Act that you are looking towards with the school budget requires a student opportunity plan. And if you remember, I forwarded you the guidelines to that plan, so we will need to come in front of the full committee at the March meeting to have you review it and vote on it as per requirement, because it is due April 1st. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Baieda. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the Superintendent? Lindsay?
Yeah, just really quickly, Dr. Baieda, who's on the Use of Facilities Subcommittee?
Thank you. It's Mr. Richard Fitzgerald, formerly of also the Facilities Master Plan, Ms. Husany, who's on, Mr. Barbosa representing the School Committee, and Ms. Katie Anokian, former School Committee member, also former member of that committee. And, oh, wasn't at the meeting, so I forget. I'll get you the other name, but I'll send it to you. But that's what we currently have is a meeting, and then today we also figured out that we probably have a little bit more time than we thought we did, and I communicated with the Subcommittee on that as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Shadis Hennessy, that's the name.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Chris, you good? All right, yeah, I think she's, okay. All right. Chris, any questions or comments for Dr. Baieda?
Someone muted, so I missed a good portion of that.
Okay.
No, not at this time.
Okay, all right. We'll make sure that you are caught up. I think we have fixed the technical issues there. All right. If we can move on to the next item on the agenda, the Student Advisory Committee Representative, we have Max Bukraka with us tonight. And Max, do you have any updates for us?
I just want to mention that the seniors are planning prom and Mr. SHS, the spring sports registration has opened, and then upcoming this week is the Unified Basketball Game tomorrow, and then Boys Basketball has playoffs Thursday.
Thank you, Max. Any questions or comments for our student representative? All right. Thank you. Good luck to the basketball team on Wednesday, or the Unified Basketball Team on Wednesday and the basketball team in the playoffs.
Thank you.
And good luck on Prom and Prom. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Project 351 acknowledgements. First of all, I would like to thank all of the families and the ambassadors, as well as the nominees, and Ms. Crowley for being able to be flexible with their schedule and coming tonight instead of our last meeting. We had that bad weather. This is really an important time and a really important acknowledgement, and I really wanted to make sure that you were all able to attend, so thank you all for coming. I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Crowley to present.
I'm just going to briefly share a little bit about Project 351. So every year at OMS, faculty silently nominate eighth-grade students for consideration as the Project 351 Ambassador from OMS and for the town of Stoughton. So there are 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts that are represented at Project 351, and they each have an ambassador to represent them. According to Project 351's selection criteria, they were asking for faculty to silently recognize and nominate students who are kind of quiet and unsung heroes in our school community, students who lead with an open heart and mind, who exemplify values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude, who have a strong ethic of service, and who respect all and have respect for the diversity of culture, race, heritage, and lived experiences. They're also looking for students who can work independently and with others, and really who have potential to be leaders in their community. So at OMS, faculty silently do this, and it's open to all faculty members from grade six through grade eight to nominate students for consideration. And this year, we had six students nominated by faculty members across the whole school, and from that, an ambassador is chosen. So the Project 351 nominees for 2024 were Tana Bernard, Brennan Cox, Valentina de Carvallo, Eden Gonzalez, Jackson Gosool, and Victor Pereira. These students were recognized for their hard work, character, and commitment, and our Project 351 Ambassador for 2024 is Tana Bernard. She models and embodies these values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude. She's a model student and a leader amongst her peers, and really an upstander in our community at OMS. She went to Launch Day, which is the kickoff for her 2024 Year of Service. Launch Day was on Saturday, January 13th this year, and she's going to share a little bit tonight about her experience at Launch Day. So I'm going to turn this over to Tana.
Hello, everybody. I have a little speech. Good evening. My name is Tana Bernard, and I am the 2024 Project 351 Ambassador representing Stoughton, Massachusetts. I want to briefly walk through my experience on Launch Day that occurred on January 13th, 2024. We first arrived at the JFK Live Room in Boston, where we were introduced to other Project 351 ambassadors representing their towns. After introductions, we listened to many inspiring speeches from local and state leaders that discussed experiences that led them to seek out opportunities that helped find careers that not only served their communities, but supported their passions. Among one of the most notable speakers, our very own Governor Maura Healey delivered a remarkable speech that discussed a potential community-based opportunities for Project 351 ambassadors. After Governor Healey's speech, I walked away excited and full of ideas on how I can become a change maker in my community. In summary, what I've learned so far as a Project 351 Ambassador is that we can be the change that we want to see. We have the power to make a positive impactful transformation to our state and throughout the world. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
There you go.
And so I think we're going to be recognizing our Project 351 Ambassador and nominees tonight. So I'm going to say the student name, and then students, you can, you're going to go up to Chairwoman Weiss.
And we're going to take a picture, so don't run, don't grab your certificate and run.
Okay. So Tana Bernard.
Thank you. Kind of an awkward angle. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll take a picture, pause for a moment to take a picture, but I just want to say congratulations to all of you. This is fantastic. Really appreciate all the work that you do for the community. Your efforts are not unnoticed, and I hope this tells you that you, people see what you do even if you're not the loud ones. And I just want to say that, Tana, you could, you do better at job at speaking in the public than I do, so be careful, because one of these days, she's going to have this job. I bet she's going to rock it, too. So let's pause for a moment and take pictures. Families, feel free to take pictures as well, so if you guys want to come on. Yeah, if we got students to come in front of us, it's going to be a strange picture, but just direct us however you.
Catherine, are we in this?
Yes. Join.
Get a couple of chairs, maybe three chairs.
It's like such a weird angle.
Leaning over the wall.
Yeah, this is a much better angle.
Yeah. You're just asking, now what are you doing?
Hey, guys, congratulations.
Thank you. I know. Don't go too far. Yeah. Come in front.
It's like a front row.
You're the ones that want to see us. No, you're fine. You're good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, open your certificates up, and that'll be nice. All right, so I'm just going to take a few, then I'll get out of everybody's way. One without flash.
Got to get the camera out. All right, we got the pictures they want? Oh, wait, one more, one more. You're welcome to say if you want, but you're, feel free to. Do all the rest of the stuff.
You don't want to do.
Yeah. Chris, can you still see us? Are you just listening to us?
What, what do you need from me?
I just.
Is your, I'm on mute. If you could mute your end, the movement is coming across, and I think we want to read it. Last time we tried, we didn't.
Oh, yeah, okay. Does that work? Yes, okay. I'll make sure that I check in with you, but feel free to, I'm already drinking, and Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to pause and take those photos. I'll.
This is a great.
Yes.
Just.
Pause, you guys. Pause. The next item on our agenda is new business. Sorry to have to.
Thank you.
The first is the out-of-state field trip request from DECA. I want to make a correction, and we'll need to correct this on their minutes next time. This is not an out-of-state field trip request, but an overnight field trip request. Per School Committee policy, as required by state law and for liability purposes, the School Committee needs to approve overnight trips. 23 Stoughton High School students have qualified to attend the Massachusetts DECA State Career Development Conference in Boston, Massachusetts, on March 7th through 9th, 2024. DECA prepares, according to their website, prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality and management in high schools and colleges across the globe, around the globe. Does somebody have any questions about this field trip request? Chris, any questions from you?
None here.
Okay. All right. This is a pretty standard request. Really, our students regularly go to this conference and benefit greatly from it. Could I have a motion to approve the overnight field trip request for the Massachusetts DECA State Career Development Conference? All right, that motion was made by Fabian. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll give that to Armando. The motion was seconded by Armando. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chris?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried 5-0. I would like to wish the participants a successful conference. The next item on our agenda is a gift acceptance from the Barbosa family. This is from Armando's family to purchase a more appropriate United States flag and a Commonwealth of Massachusetts flag and proper stands for the School Committee conference room. I don't know if I can let Armando speak on this. Is there a conflict of interest if I let him speak? All right, he's good. Does anybody have any questions? Per School Committee policy, in accordance with state law, the School Committee needs to review and accept all gifts before they're expended or used. Any questions or comments about this? Chris, you good?
Good.
Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the gift from the Barbosa family for the purchase of flags?
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Fabian. A second?
Second.
It was seconded by Lindsay. The motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
Aye abstained.
Armando abstains. I say aye, Fabian. And Chris?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you, Armando.
And thank you, Armando. Thank you to your family. So between like the artwork and our, and flags, this conference room is going to be a little bit fancier. Very appreci, very much appreciated. The next item on the agenda is we have two unpaid bills from previous fiscal years that we need to review and we need to send this on to Town Meeting. Dr. Baieda, if you could.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. We have a dated bill from services that go back to February, March, and June of '23 for a total of $1,725 for interpretive services. And because it's after the fiscal year, it needs to be considered an old bill. The process is to then send it forward. Hopefully, it'll be in this coming Town Meeting as a way to pay for it, because you can't take it out of the current fiscal year. It does require a motion and a vote.
And how did we discover this, Bella? Was it just?
It's one of those things that, I think, to be quite honest, with a lot of transition that we've had, I think it's one of those things that got lost. And finally, someone came forward and said, "I haven't been paid yet," and they went back, reviewed it, and the fact the person had not been, had not received their services, their payment for services.
And we have anything in place to review. I know you're working very hard, Ms. Perkins, to make sure this doesn't happen again.
If I could actually add, no, the Staples Bill, which is the larger one, they just filled it this week, even though they delivered the items almost two years ago. So that's what happened with that one.
Okay.
It didn't, you know, slipped through. They just never filled it, and the P.O. was closed a while back, and all of a sudden, it got sent to us this week.
All right, so we have a second unpaid bill from, the service is delivered in FY '22, but the bill was not received until this week, for those who can hear, Ms. Perkins. So we need to make a motion to move these forward through the proper channels to Town Meeting so that they can be paid. Lindsay? Yes?
And move that we move these two bills forward through the proper channels to Town Meeting so they can be paid?
I thought we need to do it separately, so.
Oh, okay.
If we could move forward, could I have a motion to move forward the FY '23 bill for interpretive services in the amount of $1,725?
That's a better motion.
Yes, okay.
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Lindsay. A second. Motion was seconded by Fabian. The motion's been moved and seconded. Vote, roll call, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chris?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried 5-0, so that's the FY '23 bill. The unpaid FY '22 bill is in the amount of $5,065.95. If I could have a motion to move that one forward to Town Meeting for payment.
So moved.
All right, that motion was made by Lindsay. A second. Seconded by Fabian. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chris?
Aye.
That motion is carried 5-0, so that unpaid bill will hopefully get paid soon. And the next item on our agenda is the Superintendent Entry Plan, and I will hand that over to Dr. Baieda.
Madam Chair, members of the committee and the public, thank you. As you know, both superintendents, as they come into a new district regardless of experience level, the idea is to look at things at 10,000 feet, meet with as many folks as you can, take a little bit of a lead on what is really going on in the district from the perspective of student achievement, morale, the needs of the district, so on and so forth. So you have a pretty hefty document in front of you where I try to, maybe for the first time, provide the School Committee as much information that I thought was relevant to the entry plan. I think it's important to recognize a couple of, a couple of things from the plan that I'd like to make or at least get out onto the public. As you all know, I'm a Stoughtonian and I'm a graduate of the system, but as I enter my 15th year in this, in this position, there's a couple of things that I've witnessed that I think the committee and the public should really know, and that is that there is a significant amount of pride in the employees of this district to do good things for kids. Period. End of story. There's such a sense of understanding of what we need to do, yet we have all of the typical pitfalls and everything that happens within a major organization with 3,800 kids and 700 employees when you add everybody in. The second thing that I think is really important is that our families see the same thing. And the survey results, one of the things that I noticed was how they do feel safe, that the children are safe, that they're safe. Our staff reported the same way. And it's not perfect, of course, right? It's an individual response that people give you. There's a sense that attending school is a positive thing for students and our employees. We need to continue to communicate better and more, and we feel that, and there's a feeling that the student environment is a positive environment, even though we've gone through a lot of difficult discussions this year because of things that have, that we've had to face as a school community, not recognizing that those things became new to us with very little transition communication and so on and so forth. Yet, our staff is doing it. There are tremendous opportunities before us in this document, really taking a lead on social, emotional, and behavioral learning, which you know is a dynamic part of our triennial plan, chronic absenteeism, which is a statewide issue, but something that we really have to address as a district. Another opportunity is learning pathways for our, for our students and multiple different ways of students learning, meeting goals of at least 90% of students at grade level by grade three, improving student achievement across the district, including graduation rates and college and career readiness. And we are beginning to really look at data for a new triannual plan as well, so that'll have an opportunity for more community involvement, staff, so on. And then the, my goals and the leadership goals all being aligned to get you folks a starting point for the next two years. I'm proud to have joined the district. From what I've, I've seen, there have been hiccups, as you know. I've had to deal with some of those here at this very table or through other means, but I've been tremendously supported by the staff and my colleagues that work with me daily, including when there's difficult conversations around budgets. And I'm going to continue to address my weaknesses and strengths and hold people accountable throughout the district, because I think that's the, one of the number one things the superintendent has to do. And finally, I'll leave you before addressing some questions that I know were sent to me and I'll make public. I just want to state one last time, the professionals in all of our departments, and I'm not going to list the departments, because I'm going to forget somebody and then I feel bad, but all of our school departments are really the key to our success. It's the people that matter. It's not really the textbook. It really isn't the Chromebook. Those are all things we need to have to continue to be better, but it's the people that are making us successful in Stoughton and the reason why our graduates from Stoughton High School and Stoughton Public Schools do so well. I did get some individual questions that I'll, just for the sake of the public, try to attempt to answer from the packet that's, that's before you. One of the questions that came up was really around, how does the impact of the budget impact learning going forward? Really, there's going to be two things. Number one, we don't really know where our enrollment is. We currently do not have any teaching classroom positions, direct teacher positions in the budget cuts currently, and I don't foresee that unless something changes. But I don't know what our enrollment's going to be for next year. Our projections are that we are continuously increasing, and that doesn't include any other things that have been provided to us. For example, this year, the 83 sheltered students that are, that are with us, never mind the 90-plus, 88-student enrollment increase that we've seen. In terms of the, the achievement gap, what is our challenge? I think it's, it's, it's in general, I think, with things like AP, it's participation, it's taking a look at not having, and this is, happens in a lot of districts, not having a lot of EL students who potentially take an AP/EL class, but maybe take a science class, or within our different demographic groups, looking at what does that really mean? And we want to take a look at that. So it's really about the demographic and participation as well. Chronic absenteeism so far this year is we have a working group that's meeting regularly. We are communicating at the school level. One of the questions that came up was really around how does the impact of the budget impact learning going forward? Really, there's going to be two things. Number one, we don't really know where our enrollment is. We currently do not have any teaching classroom positions, direct teacher positions in the budget cuts currently. And I don't foresee that unless something changes. But I don't know what our enrollment's going to be for next year. Our projections are that we are continuously increasing. And that doesn't include any other things that have been provided to us. For example, this year, the 83 sheltered students that are that are with us, never mind the 90-plus, 88-student enrollment increase that we've seen. In terms of the the achievement gap, what is our challenge? I think it's 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 in general, I think, with things like AP, it's participation. It's taking a look at not having, and this is happens in a lot of districts, not having a lot of EL students who potentially take an AP EL class, but maybe take a science class or within our different demographic groups, looking at what does that really mean? And we want to take a look at that. So it's really about the demographic and participation as well. Chronic absenteeism so far this year is we have a working group that's meeting regularly. We are communicating at the school level, sending out the same letters to families on a regular basis. We did just do some buyback time in February where students could buy back some. We're going to do that again in April and probably maybe even to the summer. But there is this thing that's happening within Massachusetts, but nationally, of it's hard at times for students for certain families to get their child to school, for whatever reason that may be, from the socioeconomics of work and they think that their kid's off to school, but they've already left for school, to the student having a social, emotional, and mental health situation where they don't want to go to school, including the more extremes of school phobia and and not all of that stuff. One of the things that is a kind of a double jeopardy here is we used to have a lot of laws that would support schools with that. Many of those have been put to the side. So now there isn't a bite, if you will, that's coming from the legal perspective. There's a lot of discussions around that. You know, sugar for me works better than than than, you know, vinegar or honey better than vinegar. But we need something with certain families who just aren't coming to school on a regular basis. So I think if our if if we could return back to some family liaison type of positions, people who could really knock on doors, you know, as a social worker type of person, not not a a public safety official, I think that could be something that in the future we have to take a look at. And we are going out to some grant money as well, just to just to let you know. And then the one of the questions here was around our enrollment and why we see a change of certain populations of students leaving us. And really, that that comes down from K to five, we're pretty stable. And then what happens in middle school and high school? You've got the churn that takes place, people in and out. You've got school choice. You've got private schools. You've got Southeastern. You've got the Aggie, and you have homeschooling. Those are going to be the literally the six areas that we see the movement within our students. So typically, and I'm, you know, you can you can not like it, I guess, but in my family situation, it happened in middle grade, right? That's you go through elementary and then you move, you make that change, middle grade, high school. So we do lose some students in that. The the positive for us is we're also seeing an enrollment, as you know, our high school is at over 1,100 students, actually getting closer to 1,200. In terms of chronic absenteeism at certain schools being higher than in others, I'm going to go back to socioeconomics, demographics. We have populations of students who are here for three, six months, then they leave. We have the reverse. We have, for example, students who just joined us in January and February for the remainder of the year. They may not be enrolled in September. They don't come back until the following January, February. So that's going to lead to students are in and out. Sometimes they unregister. Sometimes they're on the books, and we keep them on the books, and then we have to go figure out what actually took place. I was asked the last question is what is the best and worst takeaways from the survey results? I think the 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 best for me was there's a sense between students and parents and staff of safety because that's an important thing in today's world. I don't think it's that anybody's saying it's perfect, but people felt that sense. A lot of positive responses from both the students and the teacher and and the parents about our staff, mentioning specifically the the teachers as, you know, a support. I think our biggest weakness is parental involvement. By far, the biggest. We have parents who are involved at a fundraiser, but they're not involved at a on a regular basis. We have some students who are some parents who articulated that besides pick up and drop off, they don't really go into the school except for maybe parent conferences. So I thought that was kind of how do we reach out? They do like our communication. They prefer text messages. I don't know if he's still here, Jeffrey, but they prefer they like the text messages. So all of this is being released is released for anybody to within the public. I did also meet, just for the record, I also had very positive relations discussions with select board members, you folks, town manager, superintendent, DPW, town clerk, HR at Town Hall. I literally tried to meet with as many different folks who have a connection to the school department in some way, shape, or form, just to get their input about opening up lines of communication, being available when needed, that type of stuff. So and it went in a, I think, a very positive way. So that's the that's the general from 10,000 feet. I'll take any questions.
Any comments or questions? Lindsay?
Yeah, just want to say thank you for putting all this together. I know we are fortunate to have some really incredible people in Stoughton Public Schools, but it's also helpful to like have somebody come at this with sort of a fresh perspective and just get the lay of the land for me, like a 10,000-foot view. So I appreciate having all of this in one place and all of the context and the data that's in the appendices. And also just want to say I appreciate that there's like some really clear, like, short-term, medium-term wins as well as some like longer-term planning as we start to think about the next triennial plan. And even beyond that, I think there's some clear priorities for how we can get even better to be serving students. So, thank you.
Thank you. And to that, just as a so that you know, if you remember, my goal setting with you folks was I kept the entry plan separate. And I did that purposely because there's so much within the entry plan that we're actually getting it deep diving into, more details around all of the data that's more at the 10,000 feet so that when we do write the triennial plan as a team, staff, parents, students, and you folks, and you get it for the next three years, you're really using the data to try to say, how can we really target some of these areas? Which is what, you know, create the plan, work the plan, create the plan, work the plan. So, thank you for that.
Armando?
Excellent. I'm looking forward to the next plan so I can compare. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Fabian?
I just want to reiterate, Lindsay and Armando, thank you for providing us with that and giving us that perspective. It's always good to know. I just wanted to, it might be too early, just wanted to know, from your perspective, have you seen from other towns or have you gotten any feedback with regards to the parent engagement? Anything that we can do better just early on?
Yeah, it's so it really, the biggest thing that's going right now with parent and involvement is actually tied into chronic absenteeism. That's where we're seeing all the all the presentations, the workshops, both the virtual ones we've attended, both our high school principal and OMS principal have attended meetings on that. It's a lot of it's it's a lot. It's going to have to be a lot of knocking on doors. It really is. I mean, it's it's. And so one of the things you're going to see from us is I I'm just going to call it a political campaign, but you're going to see a group of us putting out lawn signs about, you know, going to school is fun. You know, things that just promote school instead of just, you know, this time of the year, you see a lot of political signs. Why not just make it, you know, hey, it's great to go to OMS? It's, you know, make it positive experience for students instead of and and instead of like sometimes the negative, which is, you know, the old stickers was my child has 100% attendance, which is great, but then it makes another student feel like I was just sick. It wasn't because I was skipping school. So you're going to see some of that in in the near future, both state level. Right now, the Secretary of Education is is doing commercials on on radio. If you haven't heard his commercials about, you know, going to school is important. He's trying to lead that effort by a very simple radio commercial. I think we're going to have to get to that level of really getting to the parents. One of the things we're starting to do now is that some of the more chronic absentee issues is going to are going to be coming out of my office, kind of like the old, okay, now you've gotten to the superintendent's office. We really need to have a sit-down over in my roundtable. Not a top-down discussion, but how can I help you get your kids to school? What what can I do better that we're not doing? You know, is it a transportation issue? Is it a social, emotional issue? Is it is it school phobia? Is it is it they don't like school? They don't feel motivated? I mean, there's so many different things that we need to talk about with our families. But we're going to start really that attack plan, if you will, on our neediest and families that need most of our support.
Do you guys have a buddy system?
We I know throughout the system, we've had buddy systems in the past. I don't know if we currently have. I'll defer to. But I don't think we do right now. They can work, and they can also not work. I've somebody who's seen them as a former principal. But, you know, we need to find ways to motivate kids to feel like they're comfortable and in school. It's hard right now. It's it definitely is something that was happening pre-COVID, but not even close to the numbers that they are today. So I think what we're seeing is that there was a sense of isolation. And the response to that isolation with our youngest kids is is going to take, I wouldn't be surprised if it's not a solid decade before we start to see numbers really turn in a positive way.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Baena?
I do. As with everyone else, thank you so much for for providing the overview and providing such a comprehensive entry plan. I really do appreciate it. I had a comment and a question. The comment in terms of reengagement is, in addition to the the other things that you mentioned, Superintendent, there's also that sense of trust that's been eroded in in public institutions and and that idea that school brings a value add that may not be as realized for some populations or in some communities as for others. So that's that's just something, you know, to to take into account. I love the idea of the the family liaisons. Boston had some relative success in having alum be those liaisons when they did the door-knocking campaign. Depending on the age of the students you're trying to reengage, if you're if you're going directly for students versus the the families. And my my final comment there is is also around, you know, offering options. They don't have to come to Stoughton. You know, there are other options. If remote would work for them, then there's always Connections Academy. There are other options. It's one of those, like, you know, I don't I don't care who you vote for as long as you vote kind of deal. So just making sure that we're meeting parents where they are and and providing them with viable options depending on the circumstances that, you know, they're they're currently dealing with. The question I had is regarding the the buyback. I know that we amended the attendance policy to allow for the buyback opportunity for students. And I know we're only just coming back from break, but I was just wondering how many students took advantage of it last week, if you know that information?
I don't have a number in front of me, but I'll make sure that I ask tomorrow morning because I'm actually meeting with some folks. I'll make sure that's a topic, and I'll leave email it out to the committee, just exactly what kind of numbers we had.
Thank you.
You bet.
I just want to echo, thank you for for putting this together. It's really helpful to to see this. And I think this, I agree, this will be very helpful as we move towards the end of the triennial plan and take some stock before we plan the next one. So I appreciate all the data and all the work that went into this and all the staff members who helped with this as well.
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff and the parents and the students who participated. Believe it or not, when you look at surveys, if you can get in this today's world, anything above 10 to 20%, you feel good about it. And we had some really good turnout with numbers. So thank you to everybody who participated. And again, this will be uploaded online for anybody to see as well.
Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the financial warrants. We reviewed and signed those before the meeting, so we will enter them into the record next time. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. Here I need to note a correction as well. The agenda says February 13th, but the minutes were from the meeting held on February 14th, since our 13th was meeting was canceled. So at this time, I would like to ask for any amendments for the February 14th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Page three on cost estimates.
Yes.
Is the amount correct? The tentative budget for the project is $113 million, which the construction is estimated at $91,000?
I will, no, I will double-check that. It's 91 million.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. I meant to double-check those numbers. I believe we have them. One minute. I will look at that if anybody else wants to. So the estimated construction cost was 91,207,858.
Record, that's construct that's construction that doesn't does not include site and all of that, so.
Actually, that was that was one of the estimate some estimated costs, but I know they reconciled it to a different number. So I actually I will get the correct numbers for this. We may need to table these minutes so I can get the correct numbers from the building committee for that. So if you have any other corrections that we can enter and then we can revisit these minutes at our next meeting. Chris, did you hear that?
I do have a correction, actually.
Sure.
On page three, under six, new business. The second paragraph, Chris Shannon suggested the school policy working group look at this so in the future, schools don't have to request approval. I would strike to go to the zoo each time.
Okay.
To request approval for academic or extracurricular trips.
Okay. All right, I would like to table these minutes so that we can get the correct numbers for this. And we will revisit them at our next meeting. Make a note of that. Next on the agenda is the school committee policy review. This policy working group met early this month to begin reviewing policy updates recommended by the MASCE, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as well as the administration. And last time, we had a first reading of these minutes. At this point, we are at the discussion. So this is the second reading, and we have a discussion. After our discussion, we may choose to vote on any or all of these policies. We may also choose to postpone that vote to a next time. So there is no rush to vote on any of these tonight. But I'd like to take a start going through the the different policies that we have here. This is a huge chunk. Perhaps next time we will do a smaller chunk. No, this, I know Mr. Ford is very excited to get going, and we got very excited and and cranked out a whole bunch. There's quite a few here. So the first one we had is AC-R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. This is a new policy proposed by the MASCE. This is not a policy that we currently have. Armando, Mr. Ford, do you want to add anything about this one?
Yes, so this policy, MASCE did an overall review of all the harassment, non-discrimination policies in response to the updated requirements under Title IX. And what they did with this policy, they actually spun this piece out, and this will contain where the school committee identifies who people would go to if they had an issue they wanted to resolve related to like civil rights, discrimination, or those things. And then they restructured some other policies that you also see mixed in here, specifically ACAB and ACA. So this this is an additional policy they chose to put in, and you see the ripple effect in some of the other policies that we brought forward as well. So it's just a restructuring by MASCE to better address issues of harassment and discrimination that they did as a response to the change in Title IX legislation.
Makes sense. Anyone have any questions or comments about this one? Lindsay?
Yeah, just really quickly, the first paragraph, the second line mentions, well, I guess the first paragraph says, "Stoughton Public Schools will respond promptly to any reports pursuant to our detailed response protocol." Is that something that lives outside of the policy? Like, is that sort of, what do you call it, an artifact for this policy? Does that make sense?
Which which part are you referencing?
The very first paragraph mentions a detailed response protocol. Is that something that already exists and we're referring to it? Is it something that like goes to supplement this?
So so what we have is we actually have a policy manual for all of our civil rights officers in district. And they detail what the response in investigative piece would be depending on if it's Title IX, Title V, Title IV, Title VI. And really, really, everything's one procedure except for Title IX, which has its own separate grievance process and and the way that we respond. All that is detailed out for the civil rights representative, be it Mr. Colantonio, one of the principals, or somebody else that's going to point in their building to deal with issues. And it maps out exactly what what the law is, what the statute is, what the regulation is, what the required response would be, what grievance process they would follow. There's a there's a detailed investigative procedure that's applicable to everything. And there's a separate procedure for Title IX because it's it's just a little different. So everything everything's well documented and well defined in terms of what rights responsibilities are for for the administrator, for the for the potential victim, for anybody else involved in it.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. So it's like it's a document that lives separately, and there's multiple versions depending on the...
Yeah, this this sets the general expectation for the district, but we have a much more detailed set of expectations for people that are actually going to implement this policy.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just note that under the last bullet point on the first page, there's a blank to add which public school. So we need to add and ask for the SBU, Stone Public Schools. All right. The next one is the ACA, which is related to this. The ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, also adds sexual orientation or gender identity to the protected categories. Any questions or comments on ACA?
I have a question.
Yes.
Might be a dumb one, but here goes. Is there, I know sex is basically male, female, but then we say sexual orientation, gender identity. Why don't we say gender?
So these protected classes, though it used to say gender.
Okay.
But these are actually prescribed by the Office of Civil Rights. So we just follow what they detail for us. So, and that's, we actually have that caveat in the policy adoption process that allows us on things like this to vote in one session because these are things that have come out of the Office of Civil Rights based on the investigations that they conduct and how they define things. So this isn't actually language which we selected for this particular policy. This is the language that we need to have to be in compliance with the OCR. So.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we're complying.
Any other questions or comments? All right, the next one is ACAB, sexual harassment. This was a fairly substantial rewrite going along with the AC-R, that restructuring there. Any questions or comments about this one? Chris, I don't want to forget you, so if you have anything.
I appreciate that.
I do see a couple grammar things here, just mainly, there's a couple run-on sentences in the first paragraph and then the top of the second. But otherwise, anything to add about this one?
I was just going to say, this is a much more explicit and detailed version of the policy than we currently have in the books. And you'll see that the focus on Title IX, which was actually driving this whole process. And Title IX actually requires a lot more than it used to. It's just incredibly explicit now in terms of the expectations for the Stone Public Schools and any other educational institution from public schools all the way through academia. So that's what you're seeing and that's why you see Title IX continually referenced in this document.
All right.
Question.
Yes.
Page four, middle of the page. It says, "Please note that the following entities have specified time limits for filing a claim." The following entities are, are the three that's listed? The MCAD, Office of Civil Rights, United States Equal Opportunity Commission? Are those the entities you're referring to?
What is it?
Yes.
The first sentence is reflected on a time limit for filing. The second one outlines which the three organizations are that you can file with.
But, okay, so the following entities, which is those three, that you can file a claim with, and then it says the complainant may also file a complaint with, is that redundant?
Okay, so it's not written well. We can fix the way that's written. It'll give us some latitude.
Okay, and then...
This, the model document, is really just the model MASC language.
Yep.
We bring that forward and generally, this group is going to determine how we amend, provided we don't change the main substance, if it's something we can change. So yeah.
So then amendment pieces are red.
Yeah, well, the amendment pieces are the things which we filled in, we're required to fill them in. And one of the things that's different with this document, with the red that you see and what we put in is it used to be you to specifically identify the person responsible because you have to do that. You see that in ACR, that's why it's removed, and that's why this piece in red is a general statement. So with this other piece, we can rework the wording.
Okay. Is there a reason why we don't indicate the time limit? We just, it's not, is it insignificant?
It's because these other organizations set their own time limits. We don't set those time limits.
But we know what they are, we just don't want to include that.
Well, we don't know that they're going to stay static.
Okay.
And what we don't want to have to do is continually research what they're doing and then update our policies if they just need to change.
Yeah, accordingly. Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next one is BDFA, which is also related, well, let's do BDFA first. This is a consolidation and rewrite of BDFA that includes some parts of the previous School councils, of course, being a undersung and really important part of the school community and school governance. Any questions about this one? Mr. Ford, do you want to add a little bit what they're accomplishing with this?
This was a consolidation of four policies to two. I thought it was well done. The one thing that we did add that wasn't in the MASC model policy was the fact that we can run an annual or biannual school improvement plan. And so the superintendent would be given the latitude to make a determination for school, whether it's one or two years. And this is consistent with guidance we received from the Department of Education where they lax the rules. It used to be an annual plan and they wanted it specifically tied to MCAS. But a lot of school districts like the Stone Public Schools is we've disaggregated the MCAS piece from the school improvement planning process so that we're not tied to it because the timelines are just off. And so for MCAS, we do a data action plan for all the schools. We usually do that in, it's due like December 1st, I believe. So we're not required to have that at our school improvement plans. This gives the principals the ability to plan at a longer term and maybe have a sustained project over multiple years if it's appropriate for the school. So that was the one thing that we asked as an administrative team that the school committee include in this policy when we update these two.
Any questions about BDFA, school councils, and BDFA-E, school improvement plan? And the next is BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings. This one we're not changing except the very last sentence, "Or contains absinthees," and that's due to a court case where we need to, it's asked us to remove that, so.
Yeah, so there was a court case and they made a determination that you can make offensive statements in school committee meetings.
Please don't. Please be respectful.
We're not encouraging you to do that, but...
It's not really, it's not encouraging to be respectful, but it is protected speech.
But we can't ban it by policy. So we've struck that piece.
Yes.
Absinthees.
This has been a result of a lot of work, so the rest of this policy has been the work of previous school committees and they put a lot of hard work into it, so I do want to acknowledge that. We're not changing it. I know that they've done a lot and it's been a very helpful policy for us as is. Any questions about BEDH? All right, BG is school committee policy development. It just removes a preset definition that allows us a little more flexibility. That is the only change to this one. Any questions about this one? All right, BGC, policy revision and review. This is, it just streamlines the language, so it's basically the same thing in fewer sentences. Any questions about this one? Comments?
I have one.
Yes, Chris?
The end of the first sentence slash first paragraph says, "The committee will review its policies on a regular basis."
Yes.
And I understand the benefit to being a little vague there, but I thought time boxing that in some way, shape, or form would be helpful for transparency.
Thoughts, Mr. Ford?
So what we've attempted to do in the past is just convene a policy working group on a regular basis so that we don't fall behind and we have some kind of system in place where we always have like a reading coming in, so informational component, a discussion component, and a voting component every month. So although we're not adding anything for inflation purposes this week or this meeting, the next meeting we will. So I don't know if you wanted to put something to that effect where there is an established group of people that are responsible for conducting this process?
Chris, does that make sense? Do you want to add something like a working group? Or you want it more of a...
Sorry, I'm having a hard time following what the question is back to me.
All right. So the, one suggestion would be to state that we would have a working group that meets regularly, but it seems like you're asking for more of a timeframe for this.
Correct. Like, are we willing to commit as a committee that will review our policies at least once annually, for example?
Madam Chair, you could put something like at least annually or at least twice annually because there are policies that come in that we want to act on right away because of whatever's happening in the world. So if you said at least, I don't know, Ms. Shannon, if this helps, but at least annually or at least twice annually, something that's a little bit more specific?
Yeah, I, once again, want to make sure that the committee has the flexibility, needs to address the business at hand as it needs to, but I would say at least annually would be kind of a bare minimum.
Okay. We can certainly send this policy back for consideration. We don't have to vote on this one tonight. Does that make sense why we can think about what this would mean, like at that time limit, if, at least annually, or if a different time limit makes sense? So that one we can keep. There's no, again, there's no rush to vote on it tonight, but it's certainly something we can keep looking at. So we'll definitely look at this one a little bit further. The next one is BHE, use of electronic messaging by school committee members. This one deletes a sentence about printing and saving a copy of every email that every school committee member sends. So when you email back to me, Kay, since you have notice of a meeting, that would have to be, under our previous policy, would have to be saved. We have digital records of this and certainly those are available through Freedom of Information Act requests. So this just makes it more realistic for us to comply with our own policy. Does anybody have any questions about this policy?
Feels aligned with climate plan and everything. You don't have to print everything.
I think this is a nod to the climate.
And there are electronic copies of everything.
There is electronics. Now, we have the school issued emails, so everything is digitized and all that tech stuff. The next one is CB, school superintendent, updates some language, for example, changes selectment to select board, and it removes a specific side of law that allows for a little bit more, wider interpretation. Mr. Ford, I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Yeah, I mean, if you read the policy, the superintendent was really only required implemented, it'd be acting in accordance with one law. So this just opens it up to all mass general laws, which is reality.
I'm challenged by the word fix. Fix their compensation. It reads, "The committee shall employ a superintendent of schools and fix their compensation." Is there a better word?
Well, it's negotiate or...
Yeah. Negotiate.
Establish.
Set, yeah, something, yeah.
Set.
Set forth or something, yeah.
Madam Chair, there's usually two parts to this. Once you're searching for a superintendent and you decide to establish a range, set a range, versus negotiate the contract. So this is setting the range really for what you would then have to negotiate later.
Sounds like better language.
Right? So it's a two-part process. If you decide that we're going to have it open and not have, and announce it that you don't have, or you don't announce it at all and you decide in executive session prior to negotiating because you always hire pending negotiations, you might say to the chair that the range is, and then the chair and legal counsel goes through that process to try to negotiate it.
All right, again, this is something certainly we can revisit and look, think about that one. The next is CBD, superintendent's contract. There's an addition of a language which clarifies that the school committee needs to vote in order to enter into negotiations. We asked MASC why the revision to this policy and that was their answer. Mr. Ford?
Yeah, they, just so that everybody knew, in entering negotiation with the superintendent, you actually have to vote to do that. I think in a lot of places, you just entered into it without actually taking the vote. So this is a specific piece they put in just to clarify it and set that expectation.
Any questions about that one?
I have one.
Yes, Chris?
Just for the newbie on the team here, is the tenure six years or is that a contract limitation? Why is it for a period not to exceed six years? Is that just a statute limitation on a contract?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Would it be helpful to note that? Meaning that that doesn't necessarily have to be the full tenure of the superintendent? That that's really referring to just the contractual agreement?
Again, something, yes.
Sorry, it says, "Under the laws of the Commonwealth, the school committee may award a contract not to exceed six years." Does that get at, Chris, what you're asking for?
I'm having such a hard time hearing your...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm like the furthest away from the computer. It says, "Under the laws of the Commonwealth, the school committee may award a contract to the superintendent of schools for a period not to exceed six years." Is that, like, under the laws of the Commonwealth phrase? Does that get at what you're saying?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
That's what luddies the water. It makes it sound like we can only have a superintendent for up to six years.
All right. This is something we can take a look at and we can examine this policy a little bit further and think about if there's a better way to phrase that. CBI, evaluation of the superintendent. This makes the evaluation much more specific, allowing the school committee to set the superintendent goals aligned with the triennial plan, which has traditionally been our focus. We did check with Dr. Baeta, he doesn't have an issue with the way this is set forth. This is kind of a little bit more of a change than some of the other policies. So if there's any, are there any questions or comments on this one? Lindsay?
Yeah, sorry, do you mind summarizing that again, like what the change here is?
Our last, the last policy, our current policy is very vague. It just says, "The school committee will work with the superintendent to set goals." This one lays out more specifically what those goals would be, focused on district goals, standard of professional practice. So it gives a little more guidance, which I think would be helpful for a younger committee like us to have a little bit more guidance on that. In the past, we did have, you know, some younger superintendents, so our goals were not necessarily the triennial goals, but usually superintendent's goals should align with the triennial plan to some extent. Mr. Ford, I don't know if you want to add?
No, you just, you got it. It's perfect.
Does that make sense?
It does. I think my question here is, DESI sets like goal areas for the superintendent, right? Or like evaluation areas? Is this like, would we have to update this ever?
So there's regulations that govern educator evaluation. And the regulations are set and there's reporting areas that we have to report on. And that's where like the common rubrics come in. We adopt the rubrics, we have to use the rubrics, so the reporting system is consistent across Commonwealth. But there's a lot of latitude in terms of professional practice goals, student learning objectives, and then aligning other goals to things like the triennial plan. And we actually had a piece that we worked out that was very similar to the model documentation from the DESE in the past, and I believe you used it this last year, some iteration of it. This isn't that. This is something which is much more broad, that doesn't interfere with you then implementing against the regulations as well.
Okay.
So this is a general expectation, but that doesn't mean that we're not still going to implement the regulations.
Okay. So if DESI ever were to change their categories, we would still be able to follow this?
Yeah, exactly. And they do make adjustments. They just updated the rubrics, there's little things they do all the time, but that would have no impact on this.
Gotcha.
But it would affect potentially how we actually on the ground implement and how we design the evaluation system.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Any questions or comments on that one?
I have one.
Yes, Chris?
After the numbered list, I feel like it would be helpful if somewhere in that paragraph was a reference to the superintendent's performance being reviewed in accordance with the specified goals and standards, something around accountability.
Okay, we can certainly hold this one for more examination.
Yeah, I don't have a more specific suggestion right now than that, but to me, it's, there's really not much baseline, but I feel that our role, and Mr. Ford, if I'm misinterpreting, feel free to correct me, but our role, you know, as oversight for the superintendent's office and performance is also a role of accountability to the town of Stoughton in terms of, you know, fiscal management, but also in terms of making sure that we are providing the best education possible in an environment that is safe and healthy.
So with this, well, when you...
So with this, well, when you, when you look at that line, what they're really talking about is specific goals and standards. They're talking about, with the standards, actually the standards and specific indicators that are in the rubric that you use to evaluate the superintendent, but that's really where the accountability lies. Also, when you set the goals, specific goals, I mean, that establishes accountability in meeting those goals. So I mean, there's a broader context in terms of how the district performs overall, but this really is about setting specific goals and looking at specific standards where you want the superintendent to pay attention, or potentially improve, or demonstrate that they're doing all the things they're supposed to do. So this really isn't the broader school district. This is more focused on a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and really specific aspects of the triennial plan, and for the district itself, meeting those goals and those standards and indicators as prescribed, either by the committee or by the Department of Education. So this is really something a little different.
Does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, so, is the performance, and I just don't know, because I haven't been involved in this process yet, is it made public?
Yeah, the whole, the whole process is public.
The school has a report card from the state, for example.
Yep.
But what about the superintendent's performance? Is that considered...
Yes.
This is a public process.
Closed personnel?
No.
Or is that accountability?
There is one person in the school district that does not have confidentiality. The superintendent's goal-setting and his evaluation is done in an open session of school committee. So there's no confidentiality, there's no personnel file. It's, it's one of the things that you accept when you become superintendent of schools, that your evaluation is going to be in public, in an open session of school committee for the entire community to see. That's part of the deal.
So I guess what I'm saying then would be is a sentence to that effect, once again, just to ensure accountability and transparency.
The final sentence, Chris, is, "All school committee discussion and deliberation related to the superintendent's performance evaluation shall be conducted in open session in accordance with open meeting law." And then the evaluation is a public document as a result of that. So that, that's sort of implied there.
But not the accountability piece. He can, not that I'm saying this, Mr. Superintendent, Superintendent, Baeta, but, you know, but if superintendent's performance in the future, like, fell drastically short, it's like the so what? You know, is it like, well, he fell short, and/or she fell short, and then we just move on, or is there any level of accountability? Can we, does it make sense to name that as policy?
So if you, if you look at Policy CB, which we just talked about earlier, it actually says, "The superintendent shall act in accordance with mass general law, all of them, as per the strike we made, and shall perform such other duties consistent with the section as the committee may determine." So I mean, accountability is actually in Policy CB for everything unrelated to educator evaluation.
Okay. Do we cross-refer policies?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would love to, you know, for additional information, or whatever wording makes sense to the policy committee, I'd love to see that policy cross-referenced in this one.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll take some time and look some more about this one. The next one is CHA/CHC. This is literally a combination of CHA and CHC, Development and Dissemination of Procedures. I believe there are no other changes to this, other than simply mashing them together. Any questions on this one? All right. Next one.
No questions, but I would like to just comment, if I'm wrong, that I was really grateful for the strike through language of what was being removed and the additions being in red. That really helped me when reviewing all of these, to make sure that I was honing in on what was different, or what the change was, were appropriate. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Ford and the committee for that.
Yes, I also found them very helpful. Thank you. Next is Policy CHCA, Approval of Handbooks. In this one, the change is that it strikes out specifically grades nine through 12, and opens us to, allows us to be for all levels. All of our schools have handbooks, which we've all seen. Any questions about this one? No? The next one is this newly drafted one that we've been working on, the ECEV, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations on School Grounds. This one, I know that I set the goal at the end of this month, but if we need to take some time and finish this one, I would like to make sure that we get it right. I did note, I think we had a discussion, Mr. Ford, about the last sentence. We have not yet petitioned the police department to enforce the parking. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, and Joe and I actually had a conversation. He went about a different route. When I was a, when I was a principal, I actually learned about this. As public schools, they're public schools, but they're not public property. They're considered private property held in a public trust. So technically, the police can't enforce anything on private property unless there's a reason for them to go on private property. So when I was a principal, I actually had to go to the police chief and ask him to enforce parking at my high school, then we had to take it to the Board of Selectmen for a vote. I think, Joe, you mentioned you had done it a different way, either in Holbrook or in Norton. But there's some kind of process we need to follow through if we want to have them enforce on school property, where we petition them, and then they choose to go ahead and accept the offer, and then follow through with whatever the enforcement might be.
Given that, do we need to strike this at the time and revisit this once we petition? I mean, we can still put in the policy and just revisit the specific, particular signs.
Well, the language we have says request.
Request, okay.
So I mean, I think that allows us to put that in the policy now, then go through the process.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this policy? Armando?
I have one.
Oh, Chris, yes.
I, once again, having some sense of what the consequence is, if they violate any of the policy, does it make sense to put in here, violators will be towed? Otherwise, there's really not much to stop people from plugging in during school hours or violating any of the other items outlined in this policy.
A common approach to that would be to put up a sign which states what the expectations are, that we wouldn't necessarily detail in the policy. And that's something that, once we figure out what we want to do, and whatever our agreement is with the police, we could go ahead and have the signs printed, and we could post them at the charging stations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Armando, did you have anything to add about this one?
No.
Okay. I know, you've had a lot of questions, and been very helpful as we've developed this. Any other questions or comments? All right. So given that, are there any policies that we would like to move forward for a vote tonight? Given all this, but certainly we can, Lindsay, guess.
Does it make sense to move forward for a vote, all of the policies we talked through, that there were not wording changes on?
We can do that.
I think that would be everything except for ACAB, BGC, CB, CBI, and ECEV. Sorry. So the five that we would not vote on because we suggested changes would be ACAB, BGC, CB, CBI, and ECEV? Does that track with what everybody else?
ECEV, we ended up...
I know. I forget how to spell.
We are, we are leaving as is.
As it, okay, sorry.
We are, we are leaving that statement, and we request, does not mean require.
So there are four, not five?
There are four, not five.
Okay. So as a group, or individually?
I believe we can vote them as a group, correct?
I think we did last year.
Yes, I think we did. Chris, does that make sense? We are voting, moving forward, all except for the ones that we're sending back for more examination, which is ACAB, BGC, CB, and CBI.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay. All right. So, that said, do we have a motion to approve? We need to list them, at least the letters.
I will move that we vote to approve the changes to policies ACR, ACA, BDFA, BDFA-E, BEDH, BG, BHE, CBD, CHA/CHC, and EC, oh, sorry, and CHCA, and ECEV.
All right. That motion was made.
So could I add something?
Yes.
So if you're going to vote BDFA and BDFA-E, you're going to have to vote to rescind BDFA-E-1, -2, and -3.
All right. Is that, is that a separate motion?
Yeah, you should probably...
Okay. All right. One thing at a time. Okay.
I can make that motion separate. Do we want to have two motions on the table?
Let's, let's do this one first, just so that I don't... All right. So we have a motion to approve this slot of policies.
And by the way, you're going to, if we're going to do CHA/CHC, we're going to have to vote to remove CHA and CHC as discrete policies.
Okay. All right. So, anything else? All right. So the motion's been made to approve these. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion was seconded by Armando. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chris?
Aye.
All right. That motion has carried 5-0, and now we need a second motion.
I move that we rescind policies BDFA-E-1, BDFA-E-2, BDFA-E-3, CHA, and CHC, because they are being replaced by policies that were voted in the previous motion.
All right. So that motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Fabian. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Chris?
Aye.
All right. That has been approved, 5-0. Thank you all for bearing with me. That's a lot. Next time, maybe we'll do fewer, a few less, now that we know what it's, we've done this before, so. All right. The next item on the agenda is unfinished old business, starting with the FY '25 budget and articles. Again, this is a standing agenda item that will remain on the agenda through town meeting in May. As Dr. Baeta noted, we have a joint budget public meeting for education budgets with the Finance Committee on Wednesday, March 6th, at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall in Town Hall. And so we need to think about what we're preparing for that. I know that Ms. Perkins has given us kind of the updated budget with, updated cover sheet for that. Any questions or comments as we move towards our FinCom meeting? Okay. Dr. Baeta?
Thank you. Good evening to all again. Let me start backwards with where I was going to go, since I do have colleagues that are here tonight. I've asked Ms. Gallant to join us this evening. I forwarded to you a memo that Ms. G and I discussed before the break, if I remember correctly, and I think it's important for the committee to listen to some of the information that I've received, that I asked for, and make it public. As you know, our nurses, nursing professional nurses are here this evening. I know that they've met recently, as today, or in the prior weeks anyways, but I wanted Daniella to come in front of us, because I think we need to take a look at some of our priorities going forward, simply because the data is showing us some information that I think requires us to relook. And as a committee, you have the right to the bottom number. I have the right to the line item numbers, to then be able to move them, but I don't move things without the committee really knowing about it. So, Daniella?
I'm chairwoman. Dr. Baeta, thank you for having me. I am flanked by the nurses that support your children in Stoughton Public Schools. We work tirelessly to meet the needs, whether it's psychosocial, it's trakes, vents, G-tubes, severe life-threatening allergies. We have kiddos who run the gamut of very complex medical histories, which I do outline in the letter. What that letter shows you is just really a snippet of information in which, of the services that we provide to students and staffs, staff throughout the district every day. What is being proposed here is unsafe, and I want to go on record expressing that. So we will be jeopardizing the safety of our students and our staff with these cuts. As it is right now, we are not at capacity based on the acuity in which we serve in, throughout the district, but also, if you think of the students that we've welcomed who are multilingual, who have various psychosocial needs that need to be met, we, we work with our school adjustment counselors, our principals, we're involved in mobile crisis, from soup to nuts, that, that whole picture of the whole child we support in our clinics. And so the concern is, is that if we are not at safe staffing levels, it's actually going to cost us more money, not to mention make, for an unsafe environment for our kids. So just running very fast numbers today, I estimate it's going to cost about $70,000 in order to provide added nursing support by removing these positions. And why that is, is that in order to have safe staff, there's two parts. So safe staffing goes with medication delegation. And if I cannot go to the Commonwealth based on 105 CMR 201, I believe, is what the law is in regards to medication delegation, and say that we are at safe staffing levels, I can't delegate medication, which means that DECA needs a nurse to go with them to even give Tylenol or Motrin. We have worked so hard to become so lean and efficient that that doesn't need to happen, except in very rare occasions. And so when I met with Dr. Baeta today, he asked me, "Where else can we cut?" I am so lean as it is, and so cost-conscious as it is with myself and my team, that I honestly don't know, because we have worked really hard in order to be, what's the word I'm looking for, fiscally responsible, right? With the health and safety of our students. So with that, if we become, if we go into this unsafe medication delegation space, it's really going to not be cost-effective, and it's going to be very dangerous for students, especially those with life-threatening food allergies. What I would like to do is invite somebody from the committee who doesn't have children, which I think it's only you, Ms. Lindsay, because I can, I can write a novel and tell you, and give you tons and tons of data, but you're not going to see the picture of what it's like to have a nonstop influx and to have to push into a classroom and do a G-tube feeding because there's short staffing, or greet the kid who just came back from some major surgery, and you know the ins and outs of what that family's been through. Like, that's our job. That's our job. We support them socially. We really are like social workers at this point, and case managers. So I would love for one of you to see what we see and experience it, and understand what this would look like, and how this would change, and what the impact would be on our kids. So, that's what I have. And if you want more data, I can drown you in data, but I just don't, I don't think that that's productive. I think it'd be much, much more impactful for, for you to experience what we see every day.
So with that being said, Madam Chair, so after meeting with Daniella today and going through this, we have $1.8 million in expenses that we are currently sacrificing. I'll use that word because these are areas such as one less bus for transportation, elementary enrichment, the night program, software and hardware, materials and supplies, contract services, and conferences, and all of our late busing, which is a major issue. That's a $175,000 light item. So... So, the total of 2.3 million between 17 FTEs that are being cut, that's 17 FTEs, that's a combination of our old employees, as well as full-time, including what Danielle just mentioned. I've asked the business office to go back and look at three, two specific areas, to see if I can, right now, the funding source is 10 nurses would maintain, potentially remain 10 nurses, so I'd have to find that financial part. And then the two-part-time clinic gates, currently, we have not been able to fill the second part-time person. So at minimum, my goal would be to try to get at least the part-time back that we have, and then go forward and see if we can still backfill for the person that we have yet to not fill. And most of that has to do around cost. People don't want to work for what we were offering at the time. And maybe there's a, because it is a new contract with the clinical para-ages, there's a potential that we could actually find somebody who says, I'll work for that, but I'm not going to work for 15. So that's part of the new agreement. So that would mean that I will be working with you. As I said earlier, these are always subject to change, because it's budget season. So that's one picture for you to have tonight, that I have to figure out. Part two, if you remember, and thank you, Danielle, and the members of the nursing professionals that are here tonight, the second part that put a big wrinkle into this, is this Thursday, there'll be a formal announcement of the changes to the ELL teaching and learning. I'm sorry, Dr. Quealy could not be here because of a medical situation with a family member. She had all plans of being here tonight. But the original difference between what we voted and wanting the SOA is about $183,000 to the good. In other words, I have $183,000, and if we get it all from FinCom, the SOA money, we have $183,000 to make a decision about going forward. Does that make sense so far? So, we had some plans for that, including some of the discussions you just heard. However, the changes in the EL situation requires that I have to meet civil rights requirements with those students as well. I also gave you a new handout with the number of EL students, and I just wanted to publicly just put that out there, so that everybody has numbers. We currently have 681 ELs and FELs, 517 of them are ELs, 164 of them are FELs, and 83 are shelter students. So that's where our numbers stand as of today. The major change is, besides some of the linguistic stuff, the changing it to the multilingual learners instead of EL, and all of that stuff, is pre-K students who are identified as ELs must now be coded in SIMS. That could be a good thing, because if you code it in SIMS, that means it's potentially part of the state formula for Chapter 70. I use the word "potential," okay? Because we don't know yet, along with the kindergarten ELs. The kindergarten screening would be changing, and the key one here that leads to staffing issues is the recommended periods of ESL instruction for Level 1 and Level 2 students are now moving to two to three periods a day must. So if we just did the minimum of two periods, that's two 45-minute periods, that we have to do with meeting the needs of students. And we know that most of our students come, many of our students coming when are Level 1, Level 2. Added to that is the SLIF students, where our students that are, literally don't have a common linguistic background, if you will. Those students need specific services, and we would do that through our consult services line item, which would also eat some of this up. So, I asked the business office this afternoon to take a look at a few line items. I'm not ready to announce those tonight, because we're still working on them. But my goal is between now and the next few days, that I get something further back to you, on how I'm going to try to meet this issue, while I'm also meeting the EL issue, and I'm cutting back $2.3 million in total from the original budget proposal that we had. I find budgets to be fluid, without recanting the last few weeks of the budget process. I'll just simply say 15 years into this job, and this is a unique place, for many good reasons, and also reasons that I think we need to change. You will see a very strong recommendation from me to you early this summer, about how we are going to change the way we do the process of the budget for Stoughton Public Schools. It's going to require more of your time and my time. But I need to establish a protocol within the district, where our fundamentals of our budget is that you're hearing from all of your principals, you're hearing from your directors across the board, not through me, but from them directly to you. It will take more time and effort, but I think it makes sense to do so. It would also lead to, I think, Ms. Shannon, your constant attention to the word transparency, that you mentioned tonight as well, on a number of suggestions that you made. It will lead to more transparency, it will lead to more potential public commentary around the priorities of the district. And then lastly, potentially lead to better decisions, hopefully. Not knowing what the FY '26 budget's going to look like, so I can't even predict that, except that we do have fixed contracts for FY, our two biggest contracts are fixed for FY '25 and FY '26. So, or three biggest contracts. So, we'll be going out for three other contracts, one which is a very, one that works under the revolving account food services, so that's one that's a little easier to do, although we do have some big changes we need to make there as well. But then the custodians and our administrative assistants are also out for '26. So, everybody's online for '25, three contracts, predominantly labor contracts, smaller groups that have to be handled for FY '26. So we don't have the bigger unions until, for FY '27. So that's the goal tonight. For the Finance Committee, I will share with you a brand-new packet that will start with this, the fundamental of the layout of the budget, the summary, the line item, okay? From there, I will have a number of items from DESI, that I believe should be entered into the record as part of town meeting on behalf of the school committee and the school department. That will include enrollment, current enrollment, projected enrollment. That'll include our Chapter 70 funding, that will include our net school spending formula, that will include comparable districts from the DART tool, that will also include like districts, or districts that are, excuse me, neighboring districts, or districts in our league, as an example. We are not comparable to some of the information that's out there, we're just not. You can't compare 3,800 students in Stoughton to 3,800 students in almost every other community in the area. We're just, it's not comparable, especially with some of the demographics that you know I'm showing you on a regular basis going forward. So when we do all of that, I will ask you to see if we can get that done by Friday. And again, I don't need a vote on that or anything, it's information, it's really what's your flavor of what you want to move forward with, so that the FinCom gets that ahead of time. They prefer to get all of their information ahead of time, rightfully so. We have one meeting with FinCom on the 6th, but I would anticipate, like other years, we'll probably be back at some point, depending on what other, what other issues come forward that become a priority that we have to make for the decisions, or the potential that there is free cash available currently, from the vote that, not only the vote you took, but also that free cash is still there. I don't know where that free cash is going currently. I'm sure some other folks to the left of me, to the right of me, and above me have thoughts on that, but that doesn't mean that the school department doesn't have thoughts on that either.
Questions or comments? Chris?
Yes?
Do you have any questions or comments on the budget process?
No, thank you. I appreciate the update.
Any more? All right. All right, thank you all. We will continue this discussion at FinCom. I do want to note that the joint cost discussion with the Select Board Working Group is another standing agenda item. I know that we're trying to work towards preparing the group. I am not ready yet to sort of propose that I would like to talk to FinCom before we assign them up for another committee, so that's certainly something, Armando.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you for the time. One of the things that I do think moving forward is important, is that the Committee on Finance and Taxation be something that we strongly urge to be part of that discussion. You know, it doesn't have to be a long-winded discussion, if you will, but I think it's time to have those hard discussions around, and I don't think it can happen without the Finance Committee representation. And I can only speak as the superintendent, it's up to you folks to decide that, along with the Select Board, and even the FinCom. But if we really want to find ways to agree to disagree, but then find commonality, I think we need all the parties in the room.
I agree. I think we definitely need that other neutral party who's invested in the town. Another thing that I want to think about is the keeping of things like minutes and records. We have two different sides coming together, and having a process by which we have a record of what went on, and that both sides can agree on, I think is really important, as we work to build trust and moving forward. So that's something I want to think through. If any of you have suggestions, please let me know, as we propose that. So, next meeting, I would like to perhaps move forward on this one, and get to the point where we can discuss with the Select Board, what this would look like. Any other questions or thoughts on the budget? I would like to move on to the Elementary School Building Project Update and Responsibilities. I don't have much on this, but I would like to note that the next Building Committee meeting is a virtual meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, where they will vote on the submission of the schematic design. If you remember, we voted in support of the schematic design at our last meeting on February 14th. I do want to note that there is a community forum for the public to discuss the schematic design and the cost estimates. That is on Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall in Town Hall. It is a hybrid presentation, so there will be a virtual option as well, and that is open to the whole community. So I hope people are able to attend that and learn more about the building project. Any questions about the building project? All right, other matters? Does anybody have any other matters? No? I do want to thank the parents and family members who have written to us to express their concerns and their support for specific programs during this budget season. Oh, yeah, we really appreciate hearing from families, what's important to them, so I want to take some time to thank them for that correspondence. I also want to thank the Fine Arts Department, again, for our fabulous origami cranes here, and the art in the hallways. Really appreciate seeing that, so, really love having a little more lively decorations here. If there's nothing else, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, March 12th, at 7:00 PM in the School Committee Conference Room here at the District Office. Again, we have that meeting with FinCom on March 6th, at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall in Town Hall. Can I have a motion to adjourn? And the motion was made by Fabian. A second?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Lindsay. Roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 Chris?
Aye, and a huge shout-out and thank you to the team that made my remote attendance possible tonight.
Yes, thank you for the patience for everyone for that. So this meeting is adjourned at 8:46 PM. Thank you all for coming, and good night.